Good evening. It is September 26, 2023 at 5:30 PM. I'm calling this session of the Bastrop City Council to order. The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business any time prior to adjournment. I'm very pleased to say that we have Kason Ankrum of the Compass Rose Harvest School, who will be accompanied by his sister, Aria Perkins.
Me.
If we follow the script, as well as the mom. And Kason is going to be leading us in the pledge, so if you will all stand. Kason, it's all of you.
You know how to start it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's give Kason a round of applause. Outstanding job. Wait a minute, got to get pictures. And now we're going to ask one of our police chaplains, Reverend Phil Woods, if he'll come up and lead us in prayer.
Father God, we want to thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon the city of Bastrop, Texas. Thank you for the opportunity to live here in this beautiful area. And tonight, Lord, we lift up our mayor and city council members, asking, Lord, that you direct them by your Holy Spirit. We pray tonight for wisdom that comes from above as they go through the agenda that is before them, and we thank you for your leadership. Tonight, Lord, we just lift up every department throughout the city. We lift up our police and fire departments. Lord, as some of those members may put themselves in harm's way, we just pray for their protection. And, Lord, tonight, we pray, we know that there's individuals within our city that may be hurting. We may not be aware of who they are, but we just pray that you would bring that to our attention, and, Lord, that we could be your hands extended to reach out to our brothers and sisters here and help meet their needs. We pray these things tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. We have no presentations or mayor's report or council members' report, but I do want to call the community's attention to an event that's going to be occurring this Saturday over at the PISD Performing Arts Center, or PAC, as Councilmember Lee pointed out. You each of y'all have a pamphlet on your, at the dice, announcing a remembrance of the landmark Delgado versus Bastrop ISD 1948 ruling. This ruling declared that segregation of Mexican-American children in Texas was illegal. This is the 75th anniversary, and again, it will be held at the BISD Performing Arts Center this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Hope y'all can make it out. They have a really good program plan. And the other thing I want to bring your attention to, counsel, if you're depending on that clock there to provide you wherever you are time-wise, don't, because it says 10 till 7, and we're nowhere near that right now. We will move on to, no staff reports, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Madam Secretary, if you will, I'm sorry, let me go back. We're into our citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody who wishes to make a comment this time?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. We're done with citizen comments, and now we'll move to consent agenda. Is anybody who wishes to have an item pulled off of the consent agenda on the dice? Anybody in the audience who wishes to have an item pulled off the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the September 19, 2023 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-37 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, fee schedule, Article A, 13.02.004, water service charge, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, providing for an effective date, codification, proper notice, and meeting. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-36, approving the Burleson Crossing East zoning concept scheme, changing the zoning for 19.81 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey from P5 Core to a planned development district with a P5 Core-based zoning, as shown in attached as Attachment 2, located at the northeast corner of State Highway 71 and Edward Burleson Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas. This concludes the consent agenda.
Counsel, the consent agenda has been laid out. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lee and a second by Councilmember Crouch. Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Madam City Manager, I have a report from the police chief. Do we want to have that report presented at this point in time, or is it just for our edification?
No, sir. It's an information report for your personal edification. I will provide it in a more detailed cover memo. This was a point in time that the police chief did a study on homelessness, and so I wanted to give it to the council because it is timely, given that it was a point in time. We will talk more about these types of reports moving forward.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to items of individual consideration. 9A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-128 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving amendment number one to the Capital Area Council of Governments, CAPCOG, lease of site for air quality monitoring for a portion of the property in the city's Mayfair Park, located at 25 American Legion Drive, for a term of three years at a total rent of $1, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all appropriate documentation, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Madam City Manager.
Mayor, this is just an agreement we have with CAPCOG for air quality monitoring. This amendment extends it for three years.
Does anybody have any questions for our city manager relative to this item? Councilmember Crouch?
I had one question, and we did a rodeo tour a month ago, and there was a little trailer parked up there with a little man in it. Is that what this dollar's for? Is that what disagreement's for? For him to be sitting there?
Yeah, well, he doesn't really sit in. I think he was monitoring it at that point in time, but it's an automatic monitoring system. They have several of them set out in the region, and as your PAC has said, it's relative to keeping, helping us to stay out of a non-attainment status, so we don't have to pay extra taxes at some point in time.
On emissions and inspections, correct.
And it's, the other side of it is, should the city of Austin, some of the surrounding area, perhaps begin to fall into non-attainment status, we have our own individual monitoring system here that perhaps we can be excluded or get a waiver should they reach a non-attainment area. So I think this is a good thing for us to have here, and it takes up very little room.
Councilmember Crouch, I was not aware you saw a little man.
I was not either.
All right. He was normal-sized.
Because it is, because it is normally an automatic monitoring process. He was perhaps there collecting data.
He did not go in the trailer, and he did come out. So there was a little man in there, an average-sized man. Anyway, I was just curious if that was the same thing? It was?
No, I think that's a little bit different, because this is just a single stand. I don't think anybody can get into our monitoring station unless they truly are a little man.
Okay. We're just curious. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions. This item's been laid out. Entertainer motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer. I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Item 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-144 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing Mayor Lyle Nelson as General Assembly Representative to the Capital Area Council of Government, CAPCOG, and replacing current member Connie Schrader, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Madam City Manager?
Again, housekeeping, this is replacing the former mayor with the current mayor on our CAPCOG.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Lee. Second, I have a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Thank you. There's a minor error in the Section 1 of the resolution that gives the mayor the authorization to appoint Mayor Pro Turn Nelson as Bastrop's designee, and it, yeah, we just need to fix that, because otherwise...
Perhaps clean that language up.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, you wouldn't be able to appoint anybody.
That's the leftover language from 2017, yeah.
So, I would ask to amend the motion to approve Section 1 with Mayor Nelson as Bastrop's designee rather than the language that's there.
So just delete the words "Mayor Pro Term."
Well, or just "Pro Turn."
Just "Pro Term."
Yes. Yeah.
As the second, I would be okay with that.
I'll be okay with that.
Okay, we're clear on that. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. We have a motion from Councilmember Lee, a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. I think it's vitally important we maintain a voice in our regional body, so I appreciate y'all's appointing me to do so. We now move to item 9C, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, establishing and adopting transportation impact fees, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Article 13.12, by enacting Sections 13.12.094 through 13.12.099, providing for definitions, providing for assessment of said impact fees, providing for the general administration of said impact fees, providing a severability clause, providing for an effective date, and an open meetings clause, providing adoption, repealer, severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date, providing for proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the October 10, 2023, agenda for a second reading. Madam City Manager?
Mayor, and I'm going to pose this question to legal. It was tabled at the last meeting. Do they need to take action to untable it? Or just the sheer nature of it being read is untabling it?
Yes, so no actions needed to untable it. You can take action today.
Great. We continue the first reading of the impact fees. You sent us back to gather information. Specifically, you wanted to see some specific impacts, and so Jake has brought a live Excel sheet that we can enter information into. He's also addressed several of the items that were at question, so Jake with Kim Lee Horn.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good to see everybody.
Glad you made it through the traffic.
I did make it through the traffic, thank you. It was pretty rough out there. So glad to be back. As City Manager mentioned, we made a couple of edits to the ordinance based on last time. We did clean up the issue with the charts showing the rates. I think it had a different rate for A and B. It is the same now. They're combined together, and it is 65% of the maximum in B, like we presented last time. We also cleared up some language in there. We added a section in there regarding the possibility of allowing for exemptions of up to one accessory dwelling unit to align with other parts of the code. And then we currently have, the grace period is 18 months, based on discussions last time. That can also, all that can change tonight. Again, this is the first reading, but wanted to note those changes in the draft ordinance from the meeting on the 19th to today. So we'll go over those. I just said them, but just for that. So the way that it's written on that second bullet point about the ADUs, up to one per lot, we showed as a reduction in fee of 100% from what they would pay. That's just one way we like to say it, is you would pay this, but if it's one ADU per lot, it would be that. If you have more than one ADU, you're still paying the rate for an ADU for that. One of the big questions we got last time was, what is the total need, and what is the revenue projections of this current proposal? So we're going to go through that a little bit on the slides, and then, as the City Manager mentioned, I do have something where we can play with the revenue projections, if we want to look at different scenarios and see how that would impact those actual projections. So some of these things are included here. They're, for the A area on the west side, this is a map that's in the report. It has a bunch of projects in it, over 20 projects along roadways, as well as intersection projects in the CIP. In that area on the west side of town, it's just shy of $65 million in improvements that are needed in the next 10 years to serve the growth in service area A and the green. In addition, one of the things I was going to highlight on this is there's a recoverable cost. It's a pretty high proportion. Part of that is because both the wests and to some degree the eastsides are seeing a doubling or tripling of the city and the current city limits in terms of the population in the next 10 years, which is consistent with the development rate we're seeing. So that's why it's a really high proportion. What we are also wanting to show here is there's that new growth we're projecting. Again, vehicle miles is a weird number. The main point of the supply and demand is even those projects are not enough to keep up with the growth that we're projecting. So this is, I would say, a conservative approach. It's a lot of projects, yes, but it's something that, in theory, doesn't even necessarily keep up with the amount of growth in the city limits, not even the ETJ we were talking about last time. This is just in the city limits. In B, it's a little bit different, because it is more built out and a little bit older on the east side of the Colorado, and it's lesser in terms of the number of costs of improvements, around 46.5 million. That recoverable cost, because there's more current traffic on roads like 91, oh, sorry, 95 and 71 today in other areas of town and here in the grid, it's about 73% of that is recoverable. So 92 for the west side, 73 on the east side. Same situation, same story here. Even with the additional roadway capacity being added, the amount of growth projected exceeds that in terms of the demand, so less supply being added than demand. I mentioned that the 2 to 3X growth in the next 10 years in the city limits, just in terms of the amount of actual growth here. This was presented with the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, but wanted to show this as well in terms of the need and the scale. What does this mean? We're projecting about 285, 286 single-family units per year. A lot of those developments, we talked about LUVs last time, that's where that's coming from. A lot of multifamily as well is being projected, just based on current developments, and we're seeing that trend continue across the entire central Texas region. Higher-density products are coming on the table all the time. What does that mean practically? Your average apartment complex could be anywhere from 150 to 300-plus units, so this is looking at about two or so apartment complexes a year, is what that translates to in terms of multifamily units. Also, lots of commercial growth. We're seeing quite a bit of commercial and retail, a little bit less on the office side. A lot of what we were seeing on the office side, that kind of lines up with national and local trends, where we're seeing a lot of folks that are telecommuting, but also office space that was built up for several years and is no longer being used. If you look at metrics for the Austin area, it's second to San Francisco in terms of open lease space nationally. So we're seeing a huge slowdown in terms of office developments, so this is consistent with what we're seeing, and then retail's still going pretty strong. That's what we're seeing on the law fronts. So that led to this final number. So y'all, that's kind of what the inputs were, that 62 million, sorry, the previous slides, this basically is the 64.7 million and the 46.6 million divided out by the growth in A and B, which is those numbers there, and that's how we got to the maximums of the 23.49 and the 14.14. Converting that to single-family, that's how that works out. So any questions on that, on the total scale of need, before I move into projections?
Counsel, any questions thus far? Councilmember Crouch?
I just had a question on the 10-year growth pattern. That was provided to you by a report that we had, or is it a report that you guys provided to us for this?
We developed this as part of the study. We worked with staff to look at the active and projected developments in the next 10 years and looked at that from a parcel basis, and then looking at current and previous developments, looking at things like Florio ratios and looking at the density of development types. There were some assumptions built in to get to this chart here, so we diverted on that with staff.
So it really won't make a difference in the calculation rate or anything? It's just, because I think that's more of a one-year growth than a 10-year growth.
Yeah, and I know a lot of the growth that's coming is even more extreme, and it's a moving target, and that's why, whether it's a maximum of five years or sooner than that, that you want to revisit if things change substantially, that can be redone at that time. Yeah. So this was as of the spring was the best guess estimate, is what we put on this together. So.
Thank you, sir. Carry on.
All right, so revenue projections, y'all asked about this. So as a reminder, from the previous Impact Fee Committee meeting, I combined residential and commercial all into one slide, we can come back to this later, talking about rates. But effectively, if we go with 65% of the maximum in B, which is certainly the average of averages between A and B that we talked about with the Impact Fee Committee, this is where things shake out. So the red portion of the pie here for y'all is smaller than some other communities. I think that's just because of the rate of growth that we're projecting in the next 10 years. I know we just heard that that might be low, but when you're talking about going from a community of around 10,000 to above 25 to 30 in a short time period like that, the amount of traffic you have on your roads today is not going to compare very close to what it's going to be in 10 years. So other communities, that portion can be as much as half. Y'all's is a lot less. It's sitting kind of more than about 15%. So...
Jake, is that also because many of our new developments are coming in outside of the city limits and are going to be subject to development agreements that...
No, this is only accounting for the city limits, so that would actually even push that even further, so.
Does counsel understand that? That this fee only applies to inside the city limits? Most of our things are coming in outside of the development agreements, and so if this fee is to be approved, that's going to be a negotiating item within the development agreement itself?
For those outside the city limits, right. So we're going to, the presumption is, if I'm not mistaken, that we're going to enter into development agreements, you know, potentially outside the city as well. And while this fee will not be, apply to those outside the city limits, it can inform the negotiations for that sort of thing, and therefore, the revenue is not included in these projections.
Exactly.
Because it would be harder to...
Yeah, everything's confined, the analysis is all confined to your city limits. So the other pieces of this, too, I showed them last time, there was a portion of the pie that some people have called beyond the 10-year window. I mentioned earlier that your demand coming outweighs the supply, so that's a zero on this one. In addition, we did do a credit calculation for that large amount of growth in property tax. That was a substantial amount, about 11.8 million in the next 10 years of anticipated ad valorem taxes coming in, so that's also taken out. But in short, it's roughly two, three-quarters of your total need could be recaptured in the city if you charged the full maximum. So what that green piece would be is, if you did charge 100% of the maximum, there were no reductions, no offsets, and no one built infrastructure and just paid checks. Key point there, just said, hey, I'm just going to write a check. Everybody does that. That's what comes out to 102 million over 10 years, or 10 million a year. Now, the grace period's going to eat into this, so that doesn't count for that. That's just saying, if we started day one, you know, and collected for 10 years, that's what it would be. It doesn't account for any reductions that you might want to make, so whether that's an ADU or something else that you would want to reduce from a policy standpoint, that does not account for that in this number. And then if someone decides to build the infrastructure rather than write you a check, you're still getting an in-kind contribution that has value, but it wouldn't be a receipt coming into the city's coffers to spend how they please in the service areas. Any questions on that part?
Seeing none. Carry on.
Okay, so this now represents the current, so I wanted to kind of go over what you could, if you went with the maximum. So if you go with about 65% of B, you're just, you're covering just under half of the total. So there was a question last time, if we went with the actual average of averages, this would just slightly shift to where it's really closer to about 50.5 million for each of the green, or 51 million for each, so that would be a slight increase, but it's pretty close. What that means, and we have a yellow piece now that showed up here, what does that mean? That's just other places that you would have to go seek to help pay for these needs that are going to come into the city. You can't, you cannot recover the blue and the red, that's part of the unrecoverable portion, the 23%, but this would mean that roughly what you're going to get is just over a third of your total need in the city limits from this, if you were to go with the current proposal, whether that's infrastructure or dollars received, is what that represents. So that's, that is what is projected. At 49.1 million a year, we know that's not linear, but what we generally see, and this was a simple assumption, it'll have more of a curve to it, but on average, after the first year, two years, if you went with an 18-month grace period, year one, you would not collect any money. This is also a really important thing to understand, is if you go with the grace period, you're not going to see revenues until the second half of 2025, really, at this point. So that's just another thing to keep in mind as part of that system, and so that's about a 15% drop in that number of 49 million. You're looking at more like 41 million over the next 10 years, so it's a little bit of a cut there. In addition, when you're looking at this, like I said, it depends on the built infrastructure, and it won't be a flat rate. It'll ramp up over time as development continues to grow at a linear rate or exponential rate, depending on how you look at it. So this is a simplified graph, but really what that does, the main takeaway here is, instead of the 49 million on this slide, you're looking at more like 41 million on this one. So that is the revenue projections. Now we're open for discussion. I would say the one thing that you could still take action on tonight, if you chose to, would be to adopt the study in the maximum fee, but we also know that, once you close a public hearing, you have 30 calendar days to take an action on an ordinance, so just know that as well. And so that's what we have tonight. I'll leave it here for discussion.
Counsel, you've heard the presentation. Do you have questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yeah, I'm still thinking about my question.
I can move to...
Yeah, go to someone else.
Councilmember Crouch?
Can you just walk through, other than the obvious advantages of the grace period, because a minimum is 12 months?
Correct.
And today, you presented 18 months, because we asked about it at the last meeting. Can you just go through the pros and cons of that wait period, the additional six months, other than it's going to benefit developers to plan that into their build-out? Is that pretty much it?
Yeah, I think the grace period is, I always like to say, is anything beyond 12 months is just a compromise. Just, hey, is more time helpful? Great, and then we know that. And I think what we talked about last time is because this is something that occurs at building permit, I think the longer the grace period, the, a pro would be is it has less impact to those longer-term developments. So I think the longer the grace period is, because a lot of folks, when they were doing their pro formas, looking at their costs for the development, probably didn't factor an impact fee at building permit into their costs. And so generally speaking, what we see is that the folks that have larger developments or longer-termer developments, the backend phases, they're going to feel more of the impact from this. So that's who it really benefits. The other thing that this usually benefits in a lot of communities is, if you're a smaller development and you're not used to having to do anything for transportation, and this is a new thing that you're not used to having to pay for, such as unintended consequences of maybe an ADU or something else like that, they would be, it would be more prolonged before that's felt, more time to educate, get the word out, let the development community know, more time for staff, your building official to get ready for however that's going to look from a processing standpoint internally in your finance folks. So that's the benefits. The cons is, it's just a longer period of time where you're not collecting the revenues effectively, or getting that built, so.
So, in your opinion, is 12 months adequate? I mean, there's a reason that there's a minimum 12 months, and it's not 18 months.
I think it's, it's a tough question, so adequate, yes or no? I think the intent of the law was that it should be, in their minds, long enough when they wrote it back in the 80s, and what's interesting about Chapter 395 is it was written by a lot of the development community folks, so I think that's what I kind of take as an inspiration there of, if they thought it was long enough then, then maybe that is long enough. I would say that 12 months is long enough, from my experience, for staff to get ready. 18 months would be more of a, kind of, again, a compromise or a give to say, hey, we're, you know, understand that this impacts you, this gives you a little bit more time to get your building permits in, effectively.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. And the grace period, was that part of the law?
So the grace period from the law, yes.
It is part of the law.
It's part of the law.
So I have a, that was actually one of my questions. The other, I'm still really concerned about the, okay, let me back up. So service area A, you gave us the maximum fees for service area A and service area B, then you showed us 65% of B would be about 49.1 million.
Correct.
So what ended up being the flat rate? I missed that one.
The flat rate is.
We weren't gonna do a B, A, and B, is what we were talking about.
Correct, so the flat rate is a proportion of B. That's what I was trying to say. So if you look at the.
What was the percent?
65% of B.
That is 65%, 65% is a percentage, which is the 49.1.
Right. Yeah, which results in 49.1, but then if you have an 18-month grace period, that comes down to about 41 million.
Flat rate, okay. So I'm still, like, help me understand the whole ADU piece, because I don't care how much I read, it all talks about new development, not current residents with homes building. I see an ADU as an upgrade, not a development. I'm just adding a storage room in the back, and I'm connecting electricity, and it's gonna be my office versus development, which is a development project. And all of what I read just talks about these fees as being charged as part of development. I don't even think that I've read anything that mentions the ADU. So I'm trying to figure out, what, where did that come in?
Sure, so the way that the current ordinance that we drafted reads defines new development as anything that increases traffic. Because the way that the study was done is based on the number of residential dwelling units for the fee development, an accessory dwelling unit by nature is an extra dwelling unit, independent living unit, and therefore generates amount of traffic. What I will say is, that doesn't necessarily have to fall within a single-family house, a duplex, or a multifamily apartment. It could, it could fall, it could be defined differently in one of those categories. Y'all would have the latitude to define that. Y'all could say, I think an ADU is most similar to an apartment unit, or it's most similar to a senior living facility unit. Y'all could define it that way and make that rate according to those, that big fat chart that we talked about last time, the land use vehicle mile conversion table. So it's some type of dwelling unit, or you could just say, like you're saying, if you don't consider that to be new development, we could define that as such and exempt any ADUs up to a certain amount.
And aren't we making an assumption? Because if I put an ADU on my property, that doesn't mean it's gonna generate any traffic. That would be whatever I'm gonna use it for. I feel like we're making an assumption here, just because someone puts a building on, or adds an additional storage or whatever to their property, it's gonna generate traffic, and really it's just me. I'm not generating any more traffic than was already there, I'm just adding an extra structure for my she shed. So I'm really, really not happy with the whole ADU piece. One, because our current code already, I'm talking to you, but I know this is gonna come from Sylvia. It already says two, why can't we stick with the two? Also, can we consider square footage as well as to determine whether or not a resident should be charged an impact fee? Again, I'm not opposed to the impact fee on new development. I think that's important. It's concerning that even with what we're doing, we're still not even gonna make half of what we need to. So, you know, residents are probably saying, well, why do it? Why make me pay extra money? And we keep talking about finding ways to cut costs for our residents, and cost of living is so high, and we take away one fee and then we add 5,000 more on. So I'm struggling really bad with the whole ADU piece.
Sure, yeah, and that's at your discretion to decide if you want to, it's policy, right? So you could exempt those completely, you could exempt two of them. If it's an expansion of an existing facility, we could define that in the ordinance and say up to a certain square footage is exempt. There's a whole new category from the draft one today that has the ADU defined, but we could add other ones like that to it. City of Austin was the one that did the square footage expansion. They set up to 1,500 square feet of add-on was no fee, up to, I think it was either 3,000 or 5,000 for commercial expansions was half, half of the collection rate that was established in the ordinance, and then beyond that, you paid the full rate. So there, it really is an open endless options of what you could do. I'm not trying to say that it should be one or the other.
Right, right, oh, I understand.
So I think, I think we're open to amending the ordinance that's on the table today for before a second reading to incorporate those things, if y'all agree that that's where we should go.
Those are our options.
So from a land use perspective, yes, absolutely, these are all assumptions. They have to be. When we model how many things could potentially go on a road, we always do highest and best use, because I'll use the movie studio as an example. Half of that property got annexed into the city limits. It's 600-plus acres, 300 of those acres got annexed, the other did not. As we plan for the water and the wastewater lines that come across the industrial property, we have to assume that he could potentially build out those 300 acres at four or five units an acre, and we have to size those lines properly. And it's the same thing for roads and impact fees as it relates to that. If we have two available AD unit, ADU units on every single lot on Main Street, that equals X amount of roads, and it equals X amount of road maintenance traffic. I think if we're gonna exempt expansions, then it would make sense to follow the building code rules. Anything above 50% expansion, according to the building code, after certain parameters, you've gotta come up to current code. So maybe we mirror something like that. In terms of ADUs, man, that's a toughie, because we have, because of the densities and because of the land use, no, you know, we're not making any more land every day. We have transitioned from what are always and have been single-family residential neighborhoods into multifamily, because you have more than one dwelling unit per lot. I know it makes sense from a, maybe an affordability standpoint, but the vast majority of those are not. The vast majority of those are Airbnbs, they're, they are moneymakers for the tenant. We can dissect that under a, under a different conversation, but the fact of the matter remains, if I go and say every single lot on Main Street and all of the stuff in the rural or in the urban area equals two plus the house that's there, how many trips does that generate? And the impact to the roads. I think what, I don't mind, or I would recommend to the council exempting one ADU, because that's already, I mean, that's a given. Folks want a she shed, a granny fly, whatever you wanna call it. And some exemption for expansion, because those are our residents who will say to us, and I say us, because I'll hear them first, and then y'all will hear them, they will say, I've been living here for a long time, I've been paying property taxes, it's not my fault, y'all planned bad, and you didn't plan for my roads, you didn't plan for this traffic. You're the one incentivizing all this stuff, city council, city manager. Why do I now get a fee for wanting to do something different to my house? So I think there's got to be some fine, some fine combing there, but two ADUs and up, we get to some significant traffic.
And I can see that, and, and I mean, add to that, the circle of people who don't want bashed off to grow at all, and now you're asking me to pay to help it grow. I mean, there's just a lot of.
I, exactly.
Things we gotta consider here, and that's all I'm asking of council.
Exactly.
Where this is concerned, is just think about the impact of our residents, the cost of living for housing in bashed drop, before we make our final decision. This is important.
And at some point in time, there's nothing precludes somebody being changing the original intent of that, that single ADU to where it does impact the roadways in some shape or form. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to police that, to see what your purpose is using it for. That's just silly.
We just assume highest and best use in that, in that zone. So if it's already a P5 core, we're gonna assume it's gonna be able to have eight duplexes or whatever ungodly number our code allows today.
You bet. Thank you. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Okay, I've got a few questions. We have the, I'm not sure, call them zones, like zone A and zone B.
Yeah, service areas.
Service area, perfect, thank you. If someone builds something in service area A and we collect a fee on it, can that money be spent in service area B?
No.
Okay, good.
It has to be contained in the service area which they're.
And so then, you said that the service areas were set because of like a six-mile limitation, something like that?
Correct, yes, state law limitations.
Okay, so what if we were to annex property that was, say, larger than six miles?
If it made the service area larger than six miles?
Or caused the service area to grow.
Sure, yeah.
Or if that property we annexed was six miles in size, I mean, even just.
Sure, yeah, that would necessitate an update of the study, short answer. So when you, when you annex, if you would want to, if you would want to impose an impact fee in the new annexed area, you'll have to look at the map, update the map, and decide if it requires a full update, a recalculation of everything, or if you could administratively do that. So some other communities around y'all have been looking at this. Round Rock's the most frequent, they've been looking at it every six months since they implemented in 2019. They've made administrative updates to their map to incorporate annexations when they didn't believe that it substantially impacted the maximum fee to a point where it got out of whack with the collection rate. Because as you remember, when the study's done, it is valid up to five years, that maximum number, and you can charge all, you can change that within that five-year window at your will, you can add exemptions if it's not doing intended things. It's a flexible program and policy in that sense. So if you make a decision this month, next month, that does not mean you can't come back and amend the ordinance and change it at any time, in terms of the rates or the exemptions at some time. People will lock in a rate at their plat date, though. That is the one thing that does stay kind of solid, so.
My comment to that, Jake, and yes, they can absolutely, you have to remember, when we look at debt and we look at pro formas, we're looking at longer periods of time, so we're making assumptions based on a particular rate. And so usually when we go out for borrow, it's a, it's a process, it's about a six- or eight-month process. We're timing the market, we're doing those kinds of things. So making abrupt changes to the ordinances will definitely impact. You keep hearing me say you cannot borrow your way into a street maintenance program. If you, if you goes back to the slide where you've got the pie pieces, you'll see that if those are 10 million, if those are 10 years, you see taxes and other funding sources, that's 5.2 million, existing demand 1.87, credit 1.1, project fees 4.9 million. That's, that's already 10, more than $10 million every year, just to keep up with where we are. So I would strongly caution the council, if we're gonna adopt a fee, let's adopt a fee, and then let's put it into practice for a couple of years before we begin to undo what potentially could create solutions to the traffic that's being created.
Yeah, I look at this, this pie chart, and the taxes and other funding sources of 52.9 million, if we had to raise 52.9 million in taxes from our residents, for instance, over that 10 years, that would be doubling of their property taxes.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? And so that's obviously substantial, a problem.
Absolutely.
And so I kind of feel like wanting to provide, like the discussion about ADUs and the discussion about this pie chart, I feel are almost independent of each other, because the people that will be paying these fees, in effect, are the developers that are building large things. And then we talk about how to exempt small individuals from having to pay it, and I don't, I don't object to that, you know, to some sort of a, of a special policy that exempts an ADU, for instance. Another thought that I had on that is maybe it could exempt the ADU unless that ADU has a separate water meter. A water meter pays, when you get a water meter, you have to pay an impact fee to get that water meter. That's, that's why the water meter costs like five grand or whatever it is. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't object to any of the thoughts behind existing residents and reducing its overall impact to them, but at the same time, for people that aren't here yet, and for houses that aren't built, and apartment complexes that are not built, in order to recover more of this $100 million, I almost kind of feel like the fee needs to be higher than what we've proposed. I don't object to any flat fee, that does kind of make it easier to administer, but like, we need to grow this green pie some more, in this, in my, in my mind.
Sometimes when I presented the pie chart, another version of the yellows, we'll make it another color and say it's not built. So one thing that is kind of different from a water, wastewater, and transportation is people learn to live with traffic. Fortunately or unfortunately what it is, it just gets worse, right? And that's what we've seen in a lot of communities that have grown up in this area and nationally is, if you can't keep up with the growth rate, then traffic just gets worse. So there is another option of not going out and asking your taxpayers for 52 million over the next 10 years, but it just means that traffic's not gonna, it's gonna get worse as the congestion builds and more people come. So I just wanna put that as a backdrop as well, that does not mean that you're gonna have to go get 52.9 million, it just means.
Victims of our own success.
Yeah, that means it's unspent, which that's actually lumped together with the green and the blue, by the way. So we're not saying how we're gonna cover the additional 30 or so million as well on top of that 52.9, so it's really more like 83 million.
Mayor Protem, the only thing I would caution with that is, remember that, that still impacts the resident, because the fee, the higher the fee, the resident's gonna end up paying for it, new resident's gonna end up paying for it.
Right.
And that goes back to affordable housing, people being able to live in bashed drop. So I agree, we wanna make the fee an amount that's gonna be beneficial, or what's the point, right? But we also don't wanna price people out of being able to live in bashed drop.
So I think there is a variable that you introduced, that you don't have to do it, you can just live with bad traffic, right? That, and, yeah, I concur. But if we elect to do it, or if future councils elect to do it, the choice for paying for it is either going to be these impact fees at a high enough rate to cover enough of the expense to make it worth doing it, or it'll be covered by taxing our residents through, through debt or through, with debt or property taxes, or a combination of debt and property taxes, at which all, again, raises property taxes. So it, to the extent that you look at it as a fee that has to be paid, and you're choosing do current residents pay it, or do future residents pay it, is kind of almost the choice that you get to make. Because, yes, you're right, the new residents that are not here today that would move into those homes would have to pay a higher, a more, higher mortgage by several thousand dollars in order to cover these fees. That is, that is a true statement, that is a fact. If that person doesn't pay it, then a current resident ends up having to pay it out of taxes at some point. So I think those are, those are the hard choices.
Fair.
Yeah.
Sorry, is there a?
Hold on, wait, wait, wait up. Are you, are you done with yours? Hey, Councilmember Meyer.
I'm done with the question.
Councilmember Meyer, if you'll just hold that thought for a moment.
Okay, let me think about what my question was. Referring to Councilmember Crouch's question about the grace period.
Yes.
I believe you stated a number, and I wanna make sure I'm clear on that, the 12 months versus the 18 months, did you say $8 million? Is the difference in that?
The difference between, okay, no. So the, on an annual basis, with the current proposed rate of, you know, 65% of the maximum would be as a flat rate across the city, that's yielding you about 4.9 million per year. So every six months is about 2.5 million dollars in loss revenue. So the difference between a 12-month grace period, so if you wanna quantify it, over the, over a 10-year period, it's about 250,000 a year, 2.5 million total over that 10-year period in lost revenue, or built infrastructure.
Councilmember Crouch.
One of my questions was, I know we have a definition for single-family house, do we have a definition in our code, city manager, for ADU? Does it have to have a bathroom? I mean, kind of what we've heard is that it has, the water meter thing, I thought Council Mayor Protem Kirkland mentioned, is a good definition of if you're gonna be living in it or not. And if you're not gonna be living in it, then you probably aren't gonna be driving around and impacting the road. So if you, if you're building a unit to rent out, or live in, or drive, or bike, or whatever you're gonna be doing, and it's probably gonna have a bathroom or a water meter, so that might be a good standard. So do we have a definition of ADU specifically? Because I've been Googling it up.
I've got the building official here, we're gonna refer back to the building code, which is really just going to address a dwelling.
So building codes, don't read.
Introduce yourself, please, for the folks.
Sorry, James High Building Official.
Thank you.
The definition of accessory dwelling unit is spelled on our development or zoning code, which based on that's gonna be a dwelling unit. Like I have a permit right now, it's gonna be a she shed. It's gonna be used, you know, as for, for that person, but if you have an accessory dwelling, it's actually a residential unit based on the zoning code.
And a residential unit is defined as having a bathroom, a kitchen.
Yeah, because you call it a dwelling. Yeah, because you call it a dwelling unit, you have minimum building codes and health codes you had to comply with.
So would you have a water meter for a she shed?
No. You wouldn't add an additional water meter. Again, I have a she shed we're working with right now, they moved the storage building in, they're converting to a she shed, while they were doing art and plumbing, but it's basically an arts and craft building, and nobody's going to be living in there.
Yeah.
And a dwelling unit, we'd consider somebody's going to be actually living there.
Yeah, okay.
So from a, I think we had this conversation, Mayor Protem Kirkland and I, from a, will you turn that mic off, there's a lot of feedback. From a residential perspective, if you are adding an additional dwelling unit to put your mom or for your child tying into the meter, tying into the existing meter, tying into existing lines, not needing an additional meter, probably very reasonable. If you're adding ADUs to rent out, you probably want to know from a consumption standpoint what you're doing, because you're going to want to keep business information related to those ADUs. So perhaps it is that you can add an ADU and not be assessed the fee if you're not going to get a separate water meter. I just want everybody to realize, you are creating a way through a regulation or a way around a regulation intended to help fund roads.
Yeah, I agree. My second question was, and Mayor Protem Kirkland kind of hinted on this too, is 65% enough? Because our projections are, to me, they're very light. And so, and then also with the 12 to 18 month, I mean, 12 months should be enough time to plan out of whatever you're going to be doing in a year from now. So is 65% enough? Do we need to get more? Because we know we've got a huge paving bill coming.
So two answers on that. One would be, so the percentage of the maximum in A, this would be helpful to understand, so it's 65% of the maximum B, but when it's flat, it's actually 39% of the maximum in A. So you're getting 39% recovery in A and 65% recovery of what you could charge in B. I think that's a helpful data point, as you talk about, isn't enough. The other piece, you talked about the paving bill. As a reminder, this money can only be spent on capital projects with capacity, you can't spend it on a maintenance project. So that's a whole separate bucket of need that's not represented in this 132.4 million, it's additional to this.
Yes.
So I just want to be clear about that.
I understand that part of it.
So I think, Councilmember Crouch, you're asking, is 82, is the 8,000 number the number, or is the 3,000 number the number?
Yes.
Yeah, from a consultant recommendation, is the 3,000 the number, or the 8,000 the number?
That's a big range.
So our recommendation when we start a program is generally to follow a weird, not a weird, it's a part of Chapter 395 of the state law. It gives you the option of calculating the ad valorem taxes, that blue piece, as just cutting it in half. That's one of the options. We actually did the fancy detailed math to come up with what we thought the actual would be, and generally speaking, it's not 50%. So what we've a lot of time recommended with new policies with cities is, if you were to charge half, and just see how much that, what is that revenue generating, how much impact is it doing, start there and then go up. If it's not enough, that's a good starting point. So that's how we landed with our recommendation at, with this, if you want it to be flat, we kind of backed into the 65% of the maximum in B to say, this is giving you about half the recovery. So that was where our recommendation came from. If y'all feel like it should be more, that's fine, that's y'all's discretion. So, but we say, we start there. We've seen other communities that started around that level and have slowly worked their way up. So both City of New Braunfels to the south, and Frisco and Dallas, they started around somewhere between 30 and 50%, and over the past 10 to 12 years, they've slowly worked their way up to 100% of the maximum over time. So that's another data point to see how those programs mature, but a lot of times we have not seen a community start the maximum, that's another data point, no one started at 100%. So everyone started at some sort of, yeah, as they've grown, they've gotten there, but not every community's gotten to 100% either, some of them stayed down.
Was it an intended escalation of rate, or was it?
No, it was across many different council bodies over a 15- to 20-year period, they just decided to. Now, when they redo the studies, one of the things that's interesting that happens is those communities, specifically Frisco, got more built outs, their maximum numbers actually started dropping, because they had less infrastructure to build as they finished building out, and less growth to serve. And so they saw this coming down, and so they said, well, we'll just go up and we'll just charge the maximum, because it's not a big jump anymore from what they were charging. So there's also a life cycle of a community's development in their city limits. And with the current legislative landscape, your city limits, the expansion of the city limits is getting harder and harder, so I would argue that might have happened faster than those communities did in the past before certain bills came about, which didn't allow for involuntary annexations, other things that have happened the last five years.
So Jake, is it possible to do a flat of 86.44 across the city?
No. So you can only charge up to the max, so if you were to charge the maximum, those two yellow columns represent that. So you can charge 86.
You could do a max of 52.4.
So we'd have to keep two different?
Yeah, so the max flat you could do is 52.4, you could come up to that. If you wanted to charge the maximum in B, at the same rate in A, 52.4 is your cap on the flat.
So to adopt those maximums up there, it has to be two separate areas?
Correct, well, you could do a flat rate, but you're just capped by that lowest maximum of 52.4 per house, yeah.
Councilmember Lee, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Crouch, you have it.
So is the plan for the motion tonight, just is it to establish the grace period and to establish the fee, percentage of fee, or is it just to adopt the tax?
Accept the study?
Yes.
The short answer is, is the public hearing was not closed. So for tonight, if you want to take an action on the first reading, it would be to either take it as it stands, which is what's in the green column here, the 65% of the maximum, with an 18-year grace period and one ADU exempted, with potential revisions to that by motions by this group, as a first reading, to then come back in the second reading with those revisions present for a second reading. The other separate action could be to close the public hearing and adopt or not adopt the study which establishes the maximums that you see.
Which would be my recommendation for council, because I think this has a really big impact. This is not just this conversation, we've been having this conversation, but I think at the most, accepting the study and that table that has the rates. I also want to remind council, one of the functions of this report and one of the functions of the stop process is, we can incentivize the developer to build the road. They don't have to give this amount of money, they can build it cheaper and faster and all of those good things, so long as we have a good transportation master plan. So this is also a hammer, if you think about it, and if I say, well, no, you go ahead and build Lakey, don't pay me the, you know, $5 million, you build it, because you told me you could build it for a million and a half, great, have at it. So it needs to be high enough to also incentivize their desire for a credit, but I think the council would be torn feathered, as would I, if we said today, this was it, and we're going to go on straight into second reading.
So if we did, accepted the study, we'd have to close the public hearing, is that correct?
If we adopted, we would then close the public hearing, and it would have 30 days
To act on ordinance.
To act upon it.
And the act, is that the first reading, or we have to complete two readings within 30 days?
Whatever your city charter says, you have to complete the.
You have to pass it.
Pass it.
So that would be two readings in 30 days.
Tonight, you could have the first reading and.
We got TML, do we have two more?
Tonight, you can continue and not close it. My thought is, and I know that Jake's like, I'm over y'all already, I'm trying not to beat Bastrop anymore. We have the Code Rodeo, the first Code Rodeo November 14. That's a good conversation point to let folks know, hey, by the way, did you know this is coming? And especially for folks who are adamant about those super densities, did you know those super densities are going to cost X amount because they have this impact on the roads? So that's just a thought. Or we can have an open house just related to this before then.
Hold your thought right there, Councilmember Lee, you had a.
I'm going to yield to Councilmember Plunkett real quick, because his light's been on for a while.
Councilmember Plunkett, then. I was going, but what was on first?
My questions revolve around the, you know, I want to understand what happens when we're wrong, because we know we'll be wrong with projections. And so if we get double the growth we've projected, where does that put us? If we get zero growth, where does that put us? And I just want to understand the risks involved. You know, we're, and so, you know, I want to explore the outlying areas.
I will tell you, you have a fiscally conservative city manager who is not going to run out and go borrow money at the passage of this ordinance.
Oh, no, I understand, yeah.
Not going to happen.
I very much trust that.
We've got to have some history, some collection, before I think anybody is going to be comfortable in saying, okay, this is a consistent revenue source, and we.
Right, but as far as setting the rate, I want to also understand that if we set the rate, we're not going to, you know, the home builders are going to head for the hills, and, you know, Smithville will, you know, be bigger than Bastrop in three years. I just, I want to understand the, you know, all the different, as many of the variables as we can understand. I know we can't understand them all.
I can walk through a couple of them, so I'll hit the growth rate, I'll hit the costs of things, and then we can go through other scenarios if we want to, Councilmember Plunkett. So for the growth rate, so when we talked about the beginning of this, the how we get the maximum fee, that's based off of the costs recoverable divided by the growth. So if that doubles, or it's double what we expected, in theory, our assumptions would have been conservatively low, meaning that the maximums were too high.
Right, but double the growth.
You're going to double.
But double the growth doesn't necessarily mean double the streets, right? I mean.
Correct, but if you set the collection rate, it's double the revenue.
Correct. So, yeah, so I just want to, you know, how does that, so is that a beneficial, I want to understand, is that a beneficial thing? Because I do intuitively, you know, at least believe that, you know, right, double the growth, you know, each individual unit of growth is, gets cheaper, you know, as, but they're, you know, but that's not a smooth curve.
Correct.
That's a jagged curve. So, yeah, like I say, I just, I want to.
Yeah, and then on the cost side, we have some real examples. So a lot of communities did these studies back in 2018, 2019, when they're doing their five-year updates right now, the costs doubled. So they're actually, their collections were not covering or keeping up with inflation by any stretch of the imagination, and that was really hard to do. So that's an opposite direction of, hey, you know, we, at least you're doing it at a time when everything's already doubled, so these costs are actually reflected with that. If I did this five years ago, your cost would have been 60 million, not 132 million. So that's kind of the outcomes. In terms of the, I think we mentioned this last week, but in terms of the impacts of what we've seen from implementing one of these versus not, it just comes down to those macroeconomic factors with the economy. Right now, we're not necessarily on the hot streak that we were the last eight to 10 years. And so we have seen communities that implemented these during the recession and didn't see a decrease in growth, and we've seen ones during the hottest times that implemented, and it remained flat or went down, and we don't know. So it's, there's not a correlation that we've noticed from when these are implemented to how that impacts growth rates. It generally seems to follow larger trends in borrowing costs, land prices, and general economic climate. So, a lot of times when we talk about it, for example, the cost per a single-family house, even at $5,000, we're talking about usually 1% to 2% of a house cost in most communities around here, so that's another just helpful data point. But we also know that prices people out, too, for affordability, 4% matters, so.
Let's take care of your questions. Councilmember Lee, I'll go back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple more quick questions. So I also saw that some cities did like a three-year phase-in, and I know people have concerned the rate might, we might be starting out too low, we could start out at 65%, and then over next year, increase it by a couple of percentage until we get to that 52 max for the flat rate. So that's something we can consider, too, not necessarily doing a change every five years, but looking at increasing it over the next three years. I think Round Rock is in their third year or somewhere, I read. So that's also an option that I saw. I also wanted to take a look at exemption for income, I think I read something about that somewhere as well, that there were some cities that if you were under a certain income, then you were automatically 100% exempt.
Yeah, that was the Austin Smart Housing Program. They defines an affordable unit as 80% of the mean gross income, so that was a moving target, but they had a separate city program that tracked that number, and if you came in for a building permit and that unit was considered to be below that threshold, then that one was exempted from the fee.
Okay.
I think that's probably the one you might be referencing.
But, I'm sorry, does not Austin have alternative funding sources that are not available to cities of our size?
Correct.
Okay, that makes a huge difference, so. Yes.
They set their impact fee ordinance to mirror the other city programs, and that's where that came from for affordable housing.
Just wanted to be clear.
And I think that, oh, one last thing for clarification, because I know that developers can be incentivized to just do the streets themselves, but if the impact fee is only, what is it?
I'm sorry.
For them to do a street would cost more than $5,000, where does that correlate? Make me understand that.
So think about a new development, and I'm going to use Pearl River, for example, and it's 600 units, 600 times.
Oh, it's per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
And so, when we talk about phasing, and I want to be really, really, really clear about this, I am not a proponent of phasing, because this demand is here now. I am a proponent of revisiting it every five years, absolutely. I am a proponent of exempt one ADU, and I am a proponent of exempt a certain amount of addition to your house, because I do, I may want to add a game room, I may want to do XYZ, absolutely. I'm even amenable if we need to keep the two different areas so that we can hit those maximums, because honestly, the way I believe it will happen is, they will end up building their own roads, because it is a lot cheaper for them to be able to do that.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you. So our city manager made the point that I think it's critical for us to consider is the growth is here now, and this, as Councilmember Crouch said, this isn't even close, you know, on the 10-year. So I really think it's imperative that we get the rate correct and also the grace period. So tell me, I don't feel right now we want to set that, and I don't, and I don't know how everybody else feels right now, so what is our step that we do right now?
So you cannot close public hearing, if you want, but you could still have a motion to adopt the study in the maximum, to say, hey, we're good with the study and the maximums, and now we're just talking about the ordinance itself, and get that out of the way.
So if we did that, does that mean you wouldn't come next time?
I mean, still around to talk through the collection rates, so. It's not done yet, if it's not done, so. And then the other piece would be, is if you don't want to take an action on the first reading of the ordinance, you might want to kick that down the road again, so you can close the public hearing and then do your two ordinances within 30 days of closing.
Say that again, please.
For the first reading of the ordinance, I guess we tabled that last time, that might be a legal interpretation question, you could still have the first reading, but would you have to close the public hearing? I'm not sure on that legally.
Are you asking for the public hearing, you want to close it now in the first reading, or?
No, 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 I'm saying, could you have the first reading without closing the public hearing? Because you'd have to close the public hearing, that's the only trigger in the law, since within 30 days of closing the public hearing.
Yes, you can, especially if there are other matters to be discussed, as it seems like there may be with some of the exemptions, so that can still be a part of a future public hearing on a second reading. Yes.
Okay, so we could.
So that gives you maximum time.
Vote on the first reading tonight.
From the time you close it.
And then leave the public hearing up.
And you could also have motions on the ordinance, things you want to see changed tonight, if you wanted.
We have the Code Rodeo November 14th, and the idea of presenting something there made a lot of sense, but that's quite a few weeks from now. I mean, way more than 30 days.
Way more than 30 days, but I think it absolutely makes sense as it relates to, we will be talking about the comprehensive plan and all of the master plans. On Friday, you will hear the drainage master plan, which also has a very large bill to it, and will also require some impact fees to new development. So all of those things taken into consideration, what does that do to the house price, what does that do to development costs, and how is that related? I'm not so concerned that a new city will crop up in Smithville, because they don't necessarily have the infrastructure to support it. I am more concerned that things would rather go out into the voluntary areas of the ET I am more concerned that things would rather go out into the voluntary areas of the ETJ and be served on septic or something else outside of Bassdrop proper, so.
Okay, Council, we've had, we've had several questions, your mic is still on, Mayor Proton.
We've had several questions relative to ADUs, we've had the sixty-five percent recovery, do we want to have a higher recovery rate? Do we want to go to a flat fee, an extended grace period, which then would delay our revenue? Phase-in approach, and do we want to still look at best practices? I mean, it's, what is y'all's pleasure?
We had some spreadsheets, apparently, you discussed that.
He has a live spreadsheet, if we wanted to...
It was for the revenue projections, to see how they would change with different rates.
At least two of us like to play with spreadsheets.
Well, I was just kind of curious. Rate is, say, a hundred percent of B as a flat rate, and just, you know, what does that do to the...
To the fifty-two oh four number?
Yeah.
If we go with that, I could try to get it up, but...
Can you pull that, the worksheet up? Your, your keyboard and mouse will work there, Jake.
Okay, great, oh, here we go, perfect, so, I'll zoom in. Thank you. Yeah, we could probably zoom to like one fifty percent, roughly. I'm driving, I got it, okay, great. All the squints, here we go. All right, so if we did go to, you said a hundred percent of B? So that would work out to... Which would be about sixty percent of the maximum in A. That would increase your total revenues without the reductions, so that forty-nine million jumps up to seventy-five million. So instead of four point nine million, we're looking at seven and a half million a year, if you go with fifty-two oh four across the flat in the city. That's that scenario, we could run other scenarios if you'd like, as you please. If we did an eighteen-month grace period, that would be, maybe leave it about eleven million on the table with that scenario. If you did a twelve-month grace period, you'd have about seven and a half million, so it's about a three and a half million dollar decision in this scenario, instead of two and a half with the previous. Lots of numbers, feel free to ask.
So for, for council's headification, at thirty-five hundred dollars a six hundred units of Pearl River would have paid a two point one million dollar transportation impact fee. At fifty-two hundred, they'll pay three point one two million.
Which in this case, they won't pay, because they're going to be inside the twelve months, I'm sure, even if it's only twelve months.
Yes. So... Yeah, what is that percentage?
Yeah, I was trying to get to the...
Six.
So that, I mentioned earlier, your current proposal on the ordinance from us was going to be thirty-seven percent recovery, this is a fifty-seven percent recovery scenario. I also wanted to say that, of the, of the total maximum across the city.
Oh, I guess one question I had was, did, I completely understand and prefer the single rate for the two areas. Is there a risk, because the difference in what is needed to be built out is so, so much, that we, that we, that we run into problems with not having enough in B, in A, I'm sorry, to, to cover what's needed, and we're sitting with a whole bunch of money in A that we can't spend?
Or in B that you can't spend?
In B that you can't spend, sorry, yes, because that, that would be my only concern with having a single rate.
Yeah, you are recovering a higher proportion of the need, yes. It'd be a hundred percent in B and only sixty percent of the need in A, roughly, yeah.
I just want to understand what level of risk is there for that to happen? Is it...
Very possible, because the, the West is becoming infrastructure-rich with the muds and the wholesale agreements and...
Oh, you think the West is gonna, would be overly, would benefit more?
So the West is the higher rate, right now.
Well, but it's, if we make it a flat rate, it won't be. We'll be recovering less of a percentage of the need.
Yeah, lower percentage of need in the West for the flat rate.
So, my concern is that we get to a point where we've collected more in B than we need, and we've, and we have need in A that we haven't collected on yet, because there's so much need in A.
So, one thing I will say, I don't know if we mentioned this before, but one of the eligible expenditures for these funds are debt service on capacity projects from the past or current. We have communities that spend all of their collections on debt service. So that's another op, in terms of, do we have money sitting there we can't use? I've never seen that happen before, I'm just going to say that with certainty.
Yeah, you just have really fancy, you have really fancy roads on one side of the town and not so good on the other.
So the collection rate for B, Jake, to understand correctly, if I were to go out and do a four million dollar borrow for Blakey, what I, which is on the west side, what I collect for B, let's say this is five years out, and it's unused, can be used to pay the debt service for Blakey, even though it's on the west side?
No, I'm saying more from your overall accounting for the city.
Got it, got it, got it.
You could use it to pay debt service to free up dollars to go pay for Blakey on the west side. You just have to make sure that the monies that go in those accounts go to the right things. It could be used for a, if you had another project on ninety-five that you contributed to TexDOT, or portions of Chestnut Street, you could take the money from B and pay for the debt service on that, that you have solid.
Mayor Proton Kirkland, your light's on.
Yeah. Madam City Manager, do you have, you had mentioned earlier, I don't know if it was ten minutes ago or ten days ago, but sometime when this meeting started, you, you mentioned the possibility of, of keeping a split rate. Do you have any proposed numbers that maybe we should punch into here, or?
No, I, I trust the study, I'm, I am cautiously optimistic that that number's going to go down over the period of years as things hurry up and get built. I am, I'm not opposed to the split rate, we do have a good GIS person, it's just a matter of training the staff, I'm not opposed to the split rate. I think when we first began to talk about it, we were talking about simplicity, and staff really, truly is concerned about getting beat up as projects come in, and they reach their twelve-month period, and I know the Austin Home Builders Association, for a project that is straddling, for example, in phase one, they didn't have to pay it, and phase two, they'll have to pay it, those are more the concerns, I don't think anybody has a concern over the geographical fences.
But is the river, though, the boundary?
It's the river, yeah.
So do we have any straddles, straddling the river?
No, no, I'm talking about a project like...
You're talking about time straddling?
Yeah, time straddling.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking geographic.
When, when it actually, the grace period ends versus not ending.
Right, right.
Now you pay, you weren't paying last month. Project, project length.
I don't know, I, I kind of want to play with the spreadsheet a little more, but...
Sure, and, and that's why I said, we're, we're coming up to some pretty important public hearings. I'm not in a hurry for you guys to do this tonight, I know, I know Jake's probably thinking differently, but my feeling is, this has the potential for such a large unintended consequence to, to think through, and for the public to say, hey, we didn't get a chance, I didn't know if I added that extra granny flat, I was going to get hit with this, so.
I was just going to offer, if you recovered the same proportion on the east as the west, sixty-five percent of what you're showing right now, that gets you up to the six point six million per year. That's just one scenario I wanted to offer up, if you did do a variable rate, east and west, that both sides represented sixty-five percent.
Can you do eighty and eighty?
Yeah, I can do eighty and eighty.
Exactly, yeah, but we kind of know what that's going to look like.
And that's about eight point one million per year.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we could share this possibly with the unit, too.
Sure, I can send it to them.
Yeah.
So, so is it your recommendation that still, just go ahead and proceed with adopting the study? And then we continue discussions, or do we have to close the public hearing?
I would adopt the study, I wouldn't close the public hearing.
Please not, no. Obviously, there's a lot more deliberation that we'll have to take on that, a lot more input, so we can just, as long as we leave the study open, we can continue to deliberate.
Yeah, I would be fine with, yeah, if we can go ahead and do the, we can, we can do the first reading, it sounds like, and, and set the, set the second reading for whatever the meeting is after the November sixteenth, fourteenth code discussion.
So we have November fourteenth and fifteenth, and then we have a date in December, and we have a date in January.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as, I mean, the clock is ticking, and the twelve months doesn't, the twelve-month grace period doesn't start until after the second reading, so, if you're fiscally okay with that, I am, too.
No, no, I'm, my, my comment is, if, if we're going to wait till the first Code Rodeo, then I will make sure that we focus on these two master plans, which is the transportation and the drainage, because that one also comes with the price tag. I'll make sure that in our, in our Code Rodeo, that is topic one and two.
That's true, as we look at, since we look at each one of these individually, we don't want to completely price ourselves out of the market by adding individual fees to the point that we've really caused an affordability problem.
We'll be much better informed, so we can make those decisions.
Councilmember Lee?
Nope.
Mayor Proton Kirkland. All right, with all that clarity, what is the desire of council?
All right, I will move that we approve the first reading, approve the, the study and the rates, at the maximum rates. And, and, and have the, the second reading set for whatever the meeting is after the sixteenth of November, and implore the public to give us feedback as far as, you know, their ideas about the unintended consequences of these rates that we're about to adopt.
That would be the December twelfth meeting, I assume council will take a break for Thanksgiving. That would be the December twelfth meeting.
December twelfth, for the second.
So would you... In, in your motion, are you setting the rate that we would charge at the maximum of A and B?
I don't think we need to, because the rate can change in the second reading.
I, I know, I mean, I know that it can, but I guess we could set it at that maximum and then change it in the second reading.
Right, yeah, we have to adopt the maximum.
You have to adopt...
Well, those are two separate actions.
Yeah, the maximum assessables is what the study establishes, it's hard to be clear on that. You're not, I don't think you're intending to adopt any collection rate at this time with the first reading.
Doesn't appear, right, I don't, right, I don't...
But if we adopt the motion, we are adopting, sorry, if we adopt the, this...
The first ordinance has a rate in it, which is sixty-five percent of the maximum of B flat across the city, to clarify.
And that's not Councilmember Plunkett's motion. Councilmember Plunkett's motion is to accept the study and the maximum is identified in the study.
Oh, so we're not accepting this, then?
First reading, or the ordinance as it stands.
I believe the motion was to accept the study and the maximum rate at this first reading.
For twelve months. For twelve-month grace period.
Actually, yeah, the, the, well, again, all those things are changeable in the second.
I will say, I will say, this is a very, very, very sensitive item that has very, very, very stringent timelines. If we are not clear, I would suggest we table it.
And the grace period doesn't take effect until we close the public hearing, so...
And, and approve for the second reading.
Yes.
In the ordinance itself.
So I want to be clear, so what, your motion is, I'm going to make sure I'm clear, we're accepting the policy at the, at the maximum rate proposed, correct?
We're accepting the study and the maximum rates.
The study, I'm sorry, the study. Study at the maximum rate proposed.
The maximum, yeah, the, the cap on what you can charge in the ordinance.
The maximum rate, it doesn't establish them as the collection rates.
Clear as mud?
So, Councilmember Plunkett, if you could, just for everybody's clarity, please repeat your motion with that.
All right, I'm going to move that we accept the study, its maximum rates, and set the second reading to be December twelfth. Thank you.
Does accepting the study require a second reading? Is that a resolution or an ordinance? Or is that just an act of council?
It's more so an act, but it's along with part of the reading, so you can accept the study, but the ordinance is what is being passed at the second reading.
But the motion did not include the ordinance at all.
So you might, could you table the ordinance piece as part of the motion, is that would help to have a separate first reading?
It seems to me the only reason to do this now is to get out of the, to get the first reading out of the way of the ordinance. If we don't need a second reading of the study acceptance, then, right, I would just say there's...
I think we're all good with the study, I think we're all good with the numbers that are as presented, as presented. We're not okay with, are we adopting a flat rate, and we're not okay with the rate, period.
Which is all part of the ordinance.
And the areas, A and B, yeah.
Agreed.
Agreed, so you're right, so, yeah, just the ordinance, I mean, sorry.
Your motion is just for the study and to set the next date.
Right.
And maintain the public hearing.
Right, so, actually, there is no second date.
Right.
For the study, it doesn't need one.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, it's just an, it's not even a resolution, it's just an act of council.
Yeah, so I move to accept the study, with my apologies.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Plunkett, I have a second by Mayor Proton Kirkland, if I heard you correctly. Any further discussion, is everybody clear now on what we're voting on? I'm going to assume so, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council, for your vote and that robust discussion, Jake, thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure.
We appreciate it. We will move on, we, council, I will inform you that item nine D has been pulled, we're waiting for the correct agreement from Bassdrop County, so it's a, not a completed deal. I see up here, Chief, has, has there been a correction since we last spoke?
It was just going to be an amendment to extend the contract, so that I could present it on the tenth of October.
But we don't have the corrected amendment, so we...
Not the corrected.
So we've pulled it from the agenda, but I appreciate your due diligence. Council, that completes our items for individual consideration, we'll move on to executive session, we have several items on there. Item ten A, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven two, to seek the advice of council and discuss potential acquisition of real estate relating to the transfer lift station in Force Main Project. Item ten B, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, to seek the advice of legal council regarding wastewater treatment plant and collection system and improvements at the administration building, including the HVAC system, amended sealed plans, supplemental instructions, change orders, contract compliance, and invoice irregularities involving KSA Engineering, Inc. Item ten C, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, to seek the advice of legal council regarding potential agreements with Aqua Water Supply Corporation regarding treated wastewater effluent. Item ten D, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one and five five one point zero seven two, to seek the advice of legal council regarding and discuss the potential acquisition of real estate relating to the Blakey Lane Extension Project. Item ten E, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, to seek the advice of legal council regarding destination and marketing services agreement with Visit Bassdrop and related information. Council, it is six fifty-nine, and we are in executive session.
Mayor, the city attorney has just informed me that we must take action on item nine D regarding animal care, it is a time-sensitive item.
Mayor, the city attorney has just informed me that we must take action on item nine D regarding animal care. It is a time-sensitive item.
Okay, thank you. It is eight oh seven, and we're out of executive session. We're now back in regular session. Prior to taking up the items that were discussed in executive session, we've been advised that we need to take up matter nine D, consider action, approve resolution number R-dash-two-zero-two-three-dash-one-four-five, approving an amendment to the Animal Control Services Interlocal Agreement with Bashrop County to extend the agreement through October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have for you an approval, I have for your approval, an amendment to the current interlocal agreement for animal control services with Bashrop County. The amendment is an extension of the current agreement. Until October thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, the current contract ends on October first of twenty-twenty-three. This amendment will enable me to bring back to you the new contract for the October tenth city council meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you for the clarification. If there are no questions. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, mayor. So can I ask some questions about the new cost?
About, I'm sorry, what?
The new cost that was discussed in the packet?
Yes, ma'am.
So I guess if I'm, if I read it right, twelve, we're paying twelve thousand annually?
A flat fee of twelve thousand, yes, ma'am.
And that's going to go to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
No, ma'am.
What, where do the three-hundred-and-twenty-five?
So the three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand was a mistake that was put into, it is the contract for the dispatch agreement. Animal Control Services is currently a flat fee for twelve thousand dollars per year. The new contract negotiations will go from a, a flat fee to a per-animal fee of two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the first year.
I don't even remember seeing the number. Oh, I do have two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. That was in the background in history.
There was an extra sheet in, in there that had to do with the mercy.
Yeah. How do we go from twelve to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
No, that was, that was, that was my fault. That was me adding more paperwork than I needed and not paying attention to the second scan.
Then I don't need to ask the rest of my questions. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Any, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I had one. Is, do you have?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's so much per, per animal, do you have a, just estimation on what that, would that come out to be?
For fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we took approximately, well, we took approximately thirty calls, which, if we took thirty animals out to the shelter for impound, that would equate to, I think, a little under seven thousand dollars. So the per-animal essentially works out better, in a sense. But the idea behind it is, one, if the shelter closes, for whatever reason, we're not paying during the time that they're closed, even if it's for a few days, because we can't take the animals out there. The second reason why it tends to work out for the city is, it kind of is an incentive for the animal control person to reunite the animal with the owner, rather than just taking it to the animal shelter. So essentially, we're, we'll still try to, since we budgeted the twelve thousand, that's where we'd like to stay within. And based on our numbers so far, we would be in, within that twelve thousand dollars.
I was just curious how compared per animal versus the lump sum, so thank you for.
Yes, sir.
Saying how many it was.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve of Councilmember Plunkett. I have a second by Mayor Protem Kirkland. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to the executive session items. I believe we have a resolution on item ten A. I will read it again. We convene and close the executive session to seek the advice of legal council, discuss potential acquisition of real estate related transfer lift station in Force Main project. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve. Resolution is, what is the number, twenty-twenty-three-one-forty-eight, I believe? Is that right, resin? You took them all up.
For ten A, yes. That is resolution number R-twenty-twenty-three-one-forty-eight?
I remembered. Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Plunkett. I have a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. We're moving on to item ten B. City council will close in the executive session, seek the advice of legal according to wastewater treatment plant and collection system and improvements at the administration building, including HVAC system, amended sealed plans, supplemental instructions, change orders, contract compliance, and invoice irregularities involving KSA Engineering, Inc. I believe we have a motion for action on this.
Yes, barring any updates on engineering plans from KSA Engineering, I move that we authorize the city manager to engage a forensics engineer for action related to wastewater treatment plant construction.
We have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Do I have a second? I have a second for Councilmember Crouch. Any further discussion on this, council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We're not taking any action on ten C, on ten D. The council closing the executive session to seek the advice of legal council regarding and discussing potential acquisition of real estate relating to the Blakey Lane Extension Project. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we direct the city manager to develop an ordinance regarding eminent domain and bring that back to council.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Kirkland. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Councilmember Meyer. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. That's all the items on the agenda, with the exception of adjournment. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? We have a second. We stand adjourned.